All right. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Councilman Smith, Chairman for the last time, the Jobs Business Growth and Tax Reform Committee. Meeting of Tuesday, August 4th is now in order. And, Madam Clerk, if you'd please call number one.
Item number one is motion by councilmembers Perry and Garcetti relative to the expansion of the entertainment and multimedia tax incentive to downtown Los Angeles. This item was also, this item was weighed by the Public Works Committee.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. John Wickham with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. Motion Perry, Garcetti concerning the extension of the multimedia incentive zone to downtown Los Angeles. We worked with the Office of Finance in the CAO to evaluate data on the subject matter. As you recall, there was also the report concerning the flight of Ugly Betty to New York that also had some recommendations concerning evaluation of the multimedia tax zones and the tax itself. And so, looking at the data, we determined that there were only forty-nine businesses in the city of Los Angeles entirely in this tax category, in this tax group. And the total revenue generated from this tax group was sixty-eight thousand dollars. There are some issues concerning the creation of special zones and in looking at creating a new zone in downtown in comparison to the amount of revenue generated in this and the importance of the film industry to Los Angeles. It became clear that maybe the best way to approach this was to suspend the tax altogether for a period of time. We recommend five years. That gives us an opportunity to attract additional businesses into the city, monitor the tax, this new incentive of eliminating the tax altogether, see what kind of businesses are attracted, bring them in, monitor it, and then check it in five years and see what's going on. In terms of eliminating it altogether, if we just stopped the tax completely, then if we wanted to reinstate it at a future date, we'd have two eighteen problems.
Two eighteen, right. Okay. So, we're saying suspend it citywide then?
Citywide.
Citywide. And that's a sixty-eight thousand dollar hit, which is normally not a big deal.
Exactly.
The city finance department may say, "That's a big deal."
Exactly.
So, all right, so that's the recommendation, is that we were going to suspend it then for five years, monitor and watch and report back and determine. Is anybody from the Daily News here by any chance? Because they don't ever believe that we actually cut taxes once in a while. Nobody here. What a surprise. What a shame. Well, I'm very supportive of this idea. I think it's a wonderful idea and I would hope that in the end result is we just do away with it altogether permanently. So, I'll be more than happy to move this to council then with the recommendation of Chair for support. And I thank you very much for the report, John, and as always, right on the point. Thank you. Item number two.
Item number two is council motion by councilmembers Zine, Smith, Garcetti relative to the business tax exemption policy. This item is also referred to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay. Who's got number two? Anybody? Bueller? Anybody?
Good morning. Antoinette Kristofal, Office of Finance. With me this morning is Zenada DeJesus, who is the Chief of the Tax and Permit Audit Division. There are actually a number of items that are on your agenda related to business tax reform and...
Would it be best if we took a moment?
I think it would be best to do that.
So, that'd be number three?
There's two through number five.
Okay, we'll just zoom out then.
And there are others that were introduced, I guess, this past Friday that have yet to get on your agenda, but also are relevant to business tax reform measures.
All right, then let's just do this legally then. If you'd call all the items.
Item number three is also motion by councilmember Smith-Guill relative to the in-depth economic analysis gross receipt tax cuts. And it was also referred to the Budget and Finance Committee. Item number four is also motion by councilmember Zine-Guill relative to the reevaluation of the process of collecting gross receipt tax on businesses within the city. This item was also referred to Budget and Finance Committee. And item number five is a motion by Garcetti, Rosendahl, Smith, and Guill relative to the city's business tax system that recognizes the use of a computer and the Internet as the primary means to provide services and a request for an ordinance to implement this tax classification.
There you go. All right. Now...
Yes. Office of Finance, we've been working closely with the mayor's office as well as some of the councilmember staff on a number of these items and have provided input and data to evaluate the motions that have been introduced. A number of the items actually overlap or there are variations, different variations of sort of the same type of recommendation. A number of them will require more than just the information that we have in our L.A. tax system, which really is just business tax information. It doesn't include any economic information about jobs or information about impacts on a business relative to other incremental revenue that could be generated if certain exemptions or reform measures are provided. So, given this, I think it would be best, similar to what we did with the two thousand and four business tax reform, is to actually utilize an outside consultant to come in and evaluate all of the options, working with our office and the council offices as well as the mayor's office, to provide a menu of options to the mayor and council for consideration so that they can all be heard at once as opposed to piecemeal and to provide for, you know, a more uniform overhaul of the business tax code. I know that there is an issue relative to funding for this. And what I have proposed, if it is agreed to by everyone, including the mayor and council, is that if we are able to use a portion of the tax amnesty receipts, as of this morning, and I'm getting daily updates on the amnesty program, we've collected ten point eight million. And in addition to that, we have one point seven million in installment agreements that have been set up for amnesty. So, that puts us to twelve point five million, and I expect that amount to grow over the next couple of weeks. So, we believe that it would be prudent to utilize a portion of the excess monies to support an overall, an overall review of the business tax code, taking into consideration all of the measures that have been proposed by the mayor's office as well as the city council and others to handle the next phase of business tax reform. Much of the money that came in from amnesty, as you know, is tied to delinquent accounts and some are actually taxpayers who had not registered with our office that came through on the amnesty program. So, we anticipate seeing ongoing revenue associated with that as well. And we believe it would be prudent to utilize a portion of that money to support business tax reform.
Is there anything more coming in from AB sixty-three compliance?
Yes, absolutely. Just to let you know, the AB sixty-three program has been a huge success for the city as a whole. As you know, when it was implemented, seventy-five percent of the monies went towards business tax reform. Twenty-five percent went to affordable housing. The fund has sunset, I think it had sunset December of oh-eight. But the money still is coming in. We're still operating that program. To date, we have cumulatively generated over a hundred and twenty million dollars for that program. I think it's been in place maybe about five, seven years. And we've added over ninety-seven thousand new businesses to the city's tax rolls. So, of course, we can use that too. Each year, we've been generating about nineteen million a year for that particular program. It includes new money that's coming in along with ongoing money because of businesses that have registered.
Okay, so, but we've sunset the fund, so there's no longer that money building up because we're in the final year of the tax cut.
Well, it's building up in a general fund.
Yeah, so it's staying in the general fund.
Right, correct.
So, we just have to move it then back out if we want to use sixty-three or the amnesty money, one or the other.
Correct, correct.
All right, and what was the, do you remember what the, was it MBA contract that we had last time? Was, I think it was MBA?
Muni Services. We utilized them for the last overhaul. I don't know if we would need to do a new RFP or if we could utilize an existing contract with Muni Services. We presently utilize them for our tax discovery program and some other programs that are in place. We would have to, you know, certainly check with the city attorney's office to see if we could just piggyback and utilize them to do this type of work or if we have to go for it with an RFP unless the city attorney can address it now.
You know what? I would need to look at the contracts.
Okay, she would need to look at the contracts, so...
When, when was this, was this going to Budget and Finance, you said? When, have we set a date for that? So, it's going to be in September before we get there? Maybe you could have an opinion for us before September? That'd be, because we're going to have one more meeting in Budget and Finance and then that's the end of it for this session, so... Mr. Wickham?
Just a formality in each of these motions that are before you, you might want to add a request that the city attorney participate in the analysis. They weren't included in some of the resolutions and so, it's just a formality. Just want to make sure everybody's on the, on the team as well as the CAO and CLA and Office of Finance. I don't know, maybe the mayor's office would want to participate as well, so...
He said yes. All right, so we, we will add in our recommendation to Budget and Finance, the city attorney and the mayor's office is participating in this discussion. Ask that the, can you, do you think you can have a report back the first week or so of September to those committees, should Mr. Parks be willing to schedule it?
Relative to utilizing an outside firm?
Yeah, and then, and then going into that study.
With appropriation, yes.
So, we could go to committee with a recommendation either for a new RFP or modifying the existing contract, get an estimate at least, a ballpark estimate, what they think it would cost, and then establish a working group which would include the mayor and the city attorney as well into working with the consultant to bring back recommendations on how we address all these code issues then.
Yes, and councilmember Smith, if I could just say, I know there's this perception out there that Office of Finance is not business friendly, that we're arbitrary and, you know, there are all types of statements relative to our department. But I just want to say that my staff, I think they're doing a great job. They are administering the tax code as it's currently written. We're very open to making changes to it. As a matter of fact, we were very much involved in the last reform and implemented all of the recommendations that were put forth by the mayor and council. And as a result of that, the business community is receiving about ninety million dollars annually in tax breaks, so I just think that's important to note.
Okay. We'll note that in that regard, as you go forward this discussion, something that came up in Budget and Finance on Monday, something that just came up five minutes ago in my discussion with the city attorney, is how we deal with people that either, and I think the case was CM two H Hill, where they asked for a refund and then we charged them some administrative fees for their refund and some interest issues. Mr. Parks said, "Why are we doing that?" City attorney just brought up the case dealing with the guy who was reclassified and then we went back and said, "You now owe us all this money for all those years. If we made the mistake and reclassified, what right do we have to go backwards and say, 'Now you owe us money' because it was our mistake.'" So, I think the city attorney's going to want you to look at from that point of view and then Mr. Parks wants you to look at it from the point of view of, if they're getting a refund, why are we charging them fees and stuff on top of refunds?
Yeah, I can actually address those two relative to the matter where the Board of Review overruled this decision. The mayor did send my office a report, a letter asking that I address that. And I will be coming back to council with a recommendation relative to that. That's separate from the reform measures that we're talking about globally. And I anticipate having something available to your, your committee or council when you come back from recess relative to that particular item. The one, I think, the CM two Hill, I know the issue that the Claims Board has had is the fact that the city is, when a taxpayer requests a refund, they are provided the interest on, on the refund. So, they're getting paid the interest. The city's paying them interest on that. And there's been discussions about looking into that because the rate, I think, is around six percent. And so, there are concerns that the interest rate is too high. The other is, what are other municipalities doing or other governmental agencies? Is there a period of time where the city can, can hold off on paying interest on refunds, particularly if the taxpayer mistakenly overpaid? So, we are looking at that and that's going to be a separate report back that has to go through the Claims Board, which I'm sure will be forwarded to your committee and other committees.
Yeah. If the business made the mistake and overpaid, I think we can legitimately give them the market rate on interest. If it was our mistake, you know, we probably want to look at something more like a LIBOR fee or something like that rate, rather, which is going to be substantially lower.
Yeah, we're looking at all of the options that are available and we'll report back.
Okay, very good. So, let's also add the controller to that working group as well.
Oh, yes.
And we have a couple of public comments, so if we could relinquish the microphones for a moment. Christopher Olson?
Good morning. Chris Olson from councilman Zine's office. Councilman Zine is currently at an LAPD training this morning, so is not able to attend, so he asked me to come to convey his thanks to the Chair for scheduling two of his motions this morning and just to convey support for the array of business tax reform proposals that is before this committee. Specifically, item number two was a proposal to modify the way that the new business tax exemption is applied. This is where the first five hundred, well, currently, businesses making less than five hundred thousand are eligible for a tax incentive, an exemption. The proposal that Mr. Zine has put forward is to instead not have it based on how much gross receipts is coming in, but just exempting the first five hundred thousand dollars of gross receipts so that it can be more broadly applied. Further, since these are new businesses coming into the city anyway, there really shouldn't be a loss to the city's budget because we're not collecting it now because they're not located in our city. And after two years, we get to collect it. So, also, item number four, which dealt with survey of surrounding jurisdictions, business tax policies, came out of interaction with the business community, who I believe is also here, which councilmember Zine thanks as well. In Warner Center, in our district, we're only a couple miles away from the city of Calabasas, which imposes no business tax whatsoever. And we have had a bleeding of businesses away from Warner Center, which is specifically designed to be a business center in the West San Fernando Valley. So, that proposal, we hope with information gained from that and also with the, it looks like the direction of the committee is to have the outside consultant, we can look at ways to incentivize businesses in the areas that are hurting the most and to bring jobs to the city, reduce commuting times for the residents of the city, and stimulate the local economy with spending in our city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And on that point, it reminds me that we saw, we, don't ever cut the chairman off. You don't do that. We saw in committee just the other day, billing and safety fees, that we were increasing certain billing and safety fees. One of the line items was they took, I think it was Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Burbank and two other cities versus our fee. And our fees were like the fifth or sixth lowest of all of them on the billing fees. A new commercial venture in Beverly Hills was three hundred and twenty dollars versus our thirty-eight. An apartment building in Santa Monica was like four hundred and something dollars versus our hundred and twenty. So, when we look at not just business tax issues, we should look at other related issues to see where we are in the broader spectrum of fees and taxes because some cities that have no business tax kill them on building taxes and other taxes. So, I think we want that broad spectrum as we market the city of L.A. to people say, "Okay, yeah, they're giving you a break over here, but they're killing you over there. And by the way, our water and power rates are half what they are over..." We need that really broad spectrum. So, I would hope as you have the consultant come in, they don't just focus on this one tax issue, but the broader tax issues, which is, and quite often, I think we miss that sales point, so thank you for that. Blythe, excuse me, I'm sorry. Both of you come up, Beverly and, Beverly Kenworthy and Blythe Holden.
Good morning. Beverly Kenworthy with the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we'd also like to thank councilmember Zine for introducing the motion. I'm specifically referring to item number four. I think, you know, sitting here, our testimony essentially was going to be what the recommendation was from the Office of Finance, which is to look at a uniform tax code reform. And that's something the L.A. Chamber certainly supports. We think modernizing the business tax code is critical to the city's long-term economic growth. It currently remains a major obstacle to creating new jobs and growing businesses here in Los Angeles. And we hear from our members all the time that they're struggling and some of them are picking up and leaving. We are asking that with this uniform tax code reform, that the mayor and the council consider creating a commission that is comprised of, you know, business leaders, tax professionals, and economic development experts. We, this group should be able to lay groundwork by looking at best practices across the globe and would identify what would work here in Los Angeles. And we think that Mr. Zine's motion should be a vital component of that broader effort. And we look forward to working with this committee and the entire council on this issue.
Very good. Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Blythe Holden. I'm from Shopzilla. I don't normally come to these meetings, so forgive me if I don't follow exact protocol. But first, I want to thank you very much for bringing up item five. It's a matter close to my company's heart. We're an Internet company related, we're located on Olympic in, in Los Angeles in councilman Rosendahl's district. And we employ over two hundred and twenty employees there, many of which are high-paying employees, given that they're software engineers are about half of our staff or otherwise doing web design and things like that. Shopzilla runs a Internet company that operates half a dozen websites designed to help consumers comparison shop, find what you're looking for, and to help smaller merchants have a big site that's well-known and recognized to display their, their products right next to those of big companies like Best Buy. And so, we've been providing the service and we've been located there for, we've been in that location for over seven years. And we have been reporting under the multimedia category for the last, for the entire time. And this past year, received an audit and were reclassified into the general office, the general office, the highest paying tax category. This represented an increase of five hundred percent of our taxes. We were previously paying around two hundred thousand dollars a year and now it's, it's over, over one million dollars. We were also slapped with the three prior years, so a three and a half million dollar tax liability as well. We're going through the board review process, but it's apparent that the multimedia section, although it contains language stating that it covers businesses that provide online and Internet services, including the design of websites for clients, it's apparent that...
Please continue.
The way, the, the way the actual auditors are reading that is very narrow and that that ordinance requires clarification. And I'm very pleased that we've had the support of the mayor's office and our councilman's office in trying to make this come about. That's item number five. And I would just, had some concern about lumping that in with this whole idea of overhaul and update and tax reform because to me, that sounds like it's going to take a while. And outside consultants and things like that. And for, for us, we're up, we're up against, obviously, huge tax liability and an expiring lease. And, you know, a lease, a business lease, you're looking at entering into an agreement for seven, ten years, something like that, on that magnitude. And we just, we can't stay in our current location, given that. And I would, I'd love to be able to get to some resolution and separate out this issue from those, from the general overhaul of tax reform so that we could maybe make progress on this issue, providing for clarification that the multimedia ordinance, the multimedia statute does include Internet companies so that we could, so that we could then make a commitment to where we are. And, and so, I kind of would like, first of all, to see if we could separate that out and, second of all, to say that the, that we love our location. We're in a fantastic building and our employees like it too. And I think that when you talk about making an economic analysis, it's not just about the tax revenue strictly from the business, like if you pay rate A versus rate B. There's an impact that goes beyond that. We spend eight hundred thousand dollars a year because we provide catered lunches five days a week to all of our employees.
We should get you together with our police department and...
Right, right. And we don't really think that we are, you know, we're not hauling trucks in and out. We're not big users of city resources. Our power, yes, we pay for it. I mean, things of that sort. So, I think those things should also be taken into account, not to mention, I'm sure, our landlord appreciates the rent. So, I just wanted to share that with you and also share that the, the general rate, while the difference is among communities, is very high. We wouldn't really consider moving to Calabasas because of the impact on our employees, but we have looked, you know, across the street at Santa Monica, we're a block and a half from Santa Monica, and at Culver City, and those rates are kind of comparable with what we've been paying under multimedia and, you know, around the two hundred thousand dollar range per year. And it's just, it's a huge impact to basically tack on to our rent an additional million dollars a year. That also represents about twenty-five percent of our net income for two thousand and eight. So, it's a, it's a huge hit, especially in these, in these times.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bonin.
Mike Bonin, Council District eleven. Good morning. Thanks for hearing these items this morning. I want to underscore a couple of things that Blythe said. Shopzilla is about as far away from Santa Monica as I am from you right now. I mean, they really are practically right across the street. There are a lot of businesses in our district that sort of fall, that may fall into the multimedia situation and they're really about as, they're, they're extremely close to Santa Monica or to Culver City or to El Segundo. In the eleventh district, we have, we're, we're really competing with these smaller cities. And, you know, we could lose hundreds of jobs with Shopzilla. And as Blythe said, you know, they really drive, they help drive the economy in that area. Their company is sort of the anchor tenant in that building. There's a gym there, which is largely supported by their employees working out after work. There's a lot of restaurants there that really depend on them. And there's a lot of situations like that where we could really take a, a huge hit to the city of L.A. You know, we hate getting all the traffic in the eleventh district, but we're going to get the traffic if they're a few feet away in Santa Monica. So, if we're getting the traffic, let's take the revenue because we sorely need it. There, this is one of those situations in, in the city where I don't think there's any bad guy in, in why the ordinance is, is as confused as it is. I think this is a situation where technology just moves a lot faster than, than the city thinks about its, its business taxes. And the technology has moved so quickly that our, our definition just doesn't apply properly. It's sort of, it's antiquated and it's a little stale. And Council District eleven and your office and CD thirteen have been working very hard with the mayor's office to try to come up with an update, the CLA and the Office of Finance and the city attorney. We have a draft that, that is ready and is before you. We would really like to see it move forward on a separate track from the overall package so that we can get some clarity for these businesses and not lose them. It still needs a little more work. It needs a financial analysis done and I'd recommend that we break it out from the other pieces of business tax reform and ask Office of Finance to do a, a financial analysis of it so we can bring it back to committee and move it on while we consider the, the bigger package.
Okay.
And I think the mayor's office concurs with that.
Okay. And Antoinette, you can do that, report back on that element in a timely way.
Yes, we can certainly do that one separate from all the others. You know, as was indicated, we have been working closely with the mayor's office.
What do you think the timeframe would be on that?
We, I, I think we had mentioned to the group, it was going to be about sixty days to do the analysis. We're going to try to do that quicker than that, but we think that that would be reasonable. It will basically address business taxes. It will not address other, other factors like jobs and things of that nature, but it will address, you know, what we have in our L.A. tax system. So, we definitely would work, you know, with the group and, and certainly take it separately if that's the wish of the council.
Okay, so, ma'am, that sixty days, would that work for you?
It's, it's, I would prefer shorter. We've been, you know, we've been waiting since April since we got this on, but you know, you can do what you can do.
We just received the, the final, somewhat final ordinance this past Thursday, so...
In the interim period, have they been paying or being forced to pay at the newer rate or are we putting in an abeyance for the moment?
We are, we are in abeyance as of Friday.
Okay, good. So, we have a timeout on what you're paying.
Right.
And then we can work this policy out in the next couple of months and give you some answers, at least in a timely way. Does that satisfy the, is that great, 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 great?
Okay, okay, okay. Thirty, forty-five would be great, great, great.
Okay, all right.
All right. That being the order on number five, then, would be maximum of 60 days to report back.
Okay.
And on two, three, and four, you have the corrections that we added, the additional groups, and you'll report back on that. Yeah, we need to refer five to Budget and Finance also, was that referred to? No, it wasn't.
No, it's not.
No. It wasn't referred, it was only this committee, so. Yeah, I just looked at it, stamped this committee only, so that's good. So you'll report back in a timely way, maximum 60 days on number five, and the two, three, and four go to Budget and Finance with the recommendations as the Chair asks-
Controller and City Attorney.
Okay. Mr. Overham, anything to add?
Good job.
All right. And for Antoinette and for all those, and for Shopzilla and anyone else, when we look at policy, obviously, the department will report back on the financial impacts to their department. When we look at the broader spectrum of value, and that is other jobs, other issues that are created, the council looks at those matters, so that you can, so that you understand that. The council will then take up those other issues, not the department. So they may come back with some language that still is not acceptable, the council still has the authority to take into its consideration all those other factors, and as we look at Los Angeles, we know that there are 22 cities on our borders. It's not just the west side, it is Burbank, Glendale. Mr. Overham knows very well, because he constructed most of those strategies against us. He's now defected to our side, and certainly Calabasas and San Fernando and a plethora of cities. So we have to be very cognizant as a council on all our policies, and while we will look very clearly at the recommendations of the Department of Finance and Treasury and others, ultimately, we have to take into account all those other issues, and that is competition from the 22 cities that just touch our borders, not counting the 88 that are in our region. So, thank you very much for all the information. We will move forward as recommended then, number five will come back, two, three, and four, Budget and Finance with the recommendations, and that ends the agenda for today. Is there anyone which to speak to committee on a non-aggented item? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned for the final time. Thank you.